Good evening and welcome. This meeting of October 13th, 2014, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Bytine?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Prohoska?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Ms. Seeker?
Here.
Mr. Streel?
Here.
Great, thank you. We are pleased to welcome Vicki Sullivan and a group from Bryant Elementary to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, so please step forward, introduce yourselves with your outside voice, so we can hear you.
Paige Abbott's from fifth grade.
Brian Kramer, I'm from fourth grade.
Logan Collins from second grade.
Anya, and I'm from fifth grade.
Natalie, and I'm from fifth grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a duty and justice for all. Thank you.
I asked Mrs. Sullivan, she said that is not their outside voices. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the annual organizational meeting of September 8th, 2014, as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the annual organizational meeting of September 8th, 2014, as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to Board Salutes. Mr. Bytine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to take a moment and highlight, there was a very interesting article in the TH about 10 days ago regarding the percentage of pre-kindergarten to third-grade students who are chronically absent. And as a district, we're about 6% of those kids in that age group that have chronic absenteeism. And I want to congratulate and salute Shirley Horstman and Principal Ed Glazer at Audubon. They undertook a program to have teachers, and to encourage teachers, to call students who are chronically absent and check on them, see how they are, and how you feeling, and we want you to come back. And I applaud that effort. That's doing something a little outside of your normal tasks, and I think that shows that not only do we care as a district, but we see the importance that these kids, and there's lots of research to support this, that these kids, if they are chronically absent during this period of time, they fall behind, and they fall behind quickly. So appreciate the efforts of Ms. Horstman and the rest of the principals who undertake that particular program.
Thank you, Mr. Bytine. Mr. Prohoska?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Donahue. I'd like to give a salute out to those that attended the Bob Timmerman dedication at Timmerman Field at Hempstead High School. Mr. Barton did a very nice job of accounting for Bob's many accomplishments, et cetera. Very good job, Mr. Barton. Mr. Rheingans, nice job of dedicating the field to him and everything. We had a little problem there with the wind blowing the cover off, but other than that, it was well deserved for a coach that spent many, many years here in the school district. It was attended by very, very many ex-coaches, teachers, administrators, et cetera. And I know that we have a lot of things in our school district that are named after individuals, and I think this one was notably recognized very well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other Board Salutes? Okay.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I would welcome anybody in our audience that wishes to address the school board to do so at this time.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there anybody that would like to have anything removed for a further discussion from that consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. This brings us to sit back and comfortable. We've got a Facilities and Support Services Committee report from Mr. Barton, and we're wrapping up some projects finally, that obviously have lengthy motions to them, but I think we also have Mr. Burkhardt's opposed and ready to help us with a little bit more color behind some of the other change orders, et cetera, that we have going on within the districts. Mr. Barton?
First, I guess we're going to lead off with the spending authority update, and so Kevin is not here, but Stan, can you synopsize?
He had to leave.
Okay.
Medical situation. He just got called, so he had to take off.
Okay.
Is our disk sheet sitting there? That'll be helpful. I do, but I don't have the color.
Just a brief overview of the spending authority.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you. With this on, can you hear me, everyone?
Okay, so as everybody on the board, and maybe not at home, understands that a school district operates on spending authority. We are allowed to spend X number of dollars per year, per student, regardless of what money we may have available to us. Spending authority is a significant issue for us, and so every year, we forecast where we're at. In October, we sort of wrap up how we finished the year that has just finished, and as well as in the next board meeting, we'll forecast where we're headed for this fiscal year. So one of the things, and I know I won't do certainly the level of depth that Kevin would have done, so I may ask him to come back. I know he's shared this at Support Services, but there really are three issues, or three areas that we watch closely. One is cash, one is fund balance, and the most important is authorized budget. So you will see that in our authorized budget, this past year, we had $117 million that we had authorized excluding carryover. So when we take the number of students we have versus the number of dollars we are allowed to spend, as well as some categorical funding and some weighting with special education students, those sorts of things, we would have been allowed to authorize to spend $117 million, or just over $117 million. However, in previous years, if we don't spend our full allocation, we are allowed to carry over that spending authority. So that's the idea of a carryover balance. So even though we overspent our budget by $2.4 million, that still leaves us with a savings account, if you will, or a unspent balance of about $13 million. So we know that from time to time, in some years, we spend less than we're allowed to because we know we'll have years where we'll need to spend more than the authorized budget would allow for us to do. That's why it's important for us to maintain an unspent balance. So in the unspent balance world, that would bring us, or did bring us, to $13.2 million unspent authorized budget. Our goal is to be in the range of about $9.9 million. So it is important to remember that we don't want to save money just to save money. We want to spend the dollars that we need to adequately educate our students in the year that we're authorized to spend those dollars, but we also need to carry some flexibility in case there's an emergency, if you will. One of the things that we also track is what's called a solvency ratio. So our solvency ratio right now is 18.5%. Our goal is between 5 and 15%, obviously. We would look at probably closer to 10% as being that solvency ratio. So again, very healthy in where we are at currently. And then lastly, I would point out cash. And again, cash has limited meaning, because even though we may have it, we are not authorized to spend it. Part of what we have done in the past three years is reduce our tax levy rate because we have cash, but not the authority to spend it, and we have committed to the community that when we don't need those dollars, we won't collect them. We'll look at our taxing authority. That trend can't continue forever, and we've tried to be very clear about that, but we've also been clear about in the years that it could, that we could reduce that, we would. One of the things that I would point out here is, two years ago, we were given a 2 plus 2 equals 4 scenario from the state. Traditionally, we've had about a 4% growth in our per-student spending allowance, or our, Mr. Kulpitz, what's the new word? Allowable?
Supplemental aid.
Supplemental state aid. Thank you. I was having a moment there. So in supplemental state aid, well, we were given a 2 plus 2. So in other words, 2% growth in that state aid and 2% one-time money in that growth. That did not account for all of the categorical funds I was talking about, so it was really about $600,000 less than it would have been in that year for additional spending authority. And that balloons next year because it's amortized, or as you can, going forward, to about $1.5, $1.6 million. So over time, we will need to look at how we are spending our dollars, not over time, but currently looking at that now, to accommodate that growing deficit that was created by that 2 plus 2, because our expenses, by and large, were above the 2% rate. So just kind of give you some synopsis of why these numbers are red. Again, it's planned, it's well within our budget and our ability to afford it. It still keeps us significantly above our goal. However, that trend, and if Kevin were here, he probably would have a diagram that shows a downward trend, we need for that to level off. We need to get into our goal range and then level off. We need to, we can't continue to overspend our budget, but at the same time, we don't need to save dollars that we could be putting into programming for our current students.
Question?
Yes.
So how does that relate to our inter-fund loan transfer? Can you kind of relate that to us a little bit?
That's where it's going to get a little bit sticky.
Just give us the...
Yeah, so we will, I'll have Kevin come back and do a better job of this than anyone comes to that, but pardon?
Do you have a specific question, Jim?
Just in general, like what that means, like transferring funds to the general fund, to the sales tax?
Sure. So, you know, we have to move dollars between funds from time to time to make these, so we don't overspend one fund or underspend another. A lot of the funding we receive from the state is what we call categorical. It can only be spent on a specific item, and those, and correct me if I speak wrong here, but those funds aren't always timely in when they come, and so sometimes we have to do a transfer, and then we make that right when we receive those funds from the state.
Instead of technically, it would require a board resolution every time that Kevin needed to do that.
Yes.
This resolution allows Kevin to do that as needed.
As needed.
Up to $2 million is the way the resolution...
Knowing that at the end of the year...
He has to have it all...
That will all balance out. And it's all subject to an audit. So it's not that those dollars stay there, but it's kind of a flow issue as we receive dollars, making sure that we have access to the dollars that we need at the end of the year, though that's all balanced out and subject to an audit.
Right. You've explained that very well. That didn't sound very sticky.
I'm glad you...
Next up, do it on a unit cycle.
While juggling, okay. You good?
Thanks.
Very good.
Okay, next item is adopt the inter-fund loan resolution. I move that the Board of Education approve the following resolution for inter-fund loans. Whereas pursuant to the Iowa Department of Education's declaratory order, all loans between funds in a school district within a fiscal year must be accomplished through official board action and may not be accomplished until the board authorizes the loan by resolution. Whereas the board deems it necessary and desirable to make loans between funds within the current fiscal year, whereas the board wishes to take action to adopt a resolution authorizing loans between funds, now therefore be it resolved by the board, section one. The Board of Directors of the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque County of the State of Iowa makes a motion to authorize an inter-fund loan from the general fund of the sales tax fund in an amount up to $2 million with an interest rate of .25%. Section two, the board secretary, superintendent, and/or business manager are authorized and directed to take all appropriate actions to comply with the requirements of the Iowa Department of Education's declaratory order regarding inter-fund loans. Section three, all resolutions or orders are parts thereof in conflict, herewith be and the same are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the following resolution for inter-fund loans as read. Are there any questions?
Mike, the only thing I'd put out is that in section two, it says point-blank, comply with the requirements of the Iowa Department of Education's declaratory order regarding inter-fund loans. So the provisions are there, and there's a process that you adhere to.
Yep. Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a question about section one. It says the transfer from the general fund to the sales tax fund. Is that the 1% sales tax fund?
Yes.
That's right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the renaming of Jones Campus to Alta Vista Campus.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the renaming of Jones Campus to Alta Vista Campus. Discussion?
Well, there should be some kind of explanation on this.
I guess Barton Campus was...
The bottom line is, we, upon research, we just decided at the facilities meeting that after a long period of time where we recognized the building as Jones Building, that because Jones has an interesting history. Jones was a Southern sympathizer. He was, he had sons that marched off to fight for the Confederacy, and just a number of things. And it just made sense with the changing needs of that building. They also, I think, a new identity was something that they sought out as well. So calling it the Alta Vista Campus was something that seemed to make sense at this point.
Absolutely. It's a great synopsis.
Perfect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the district's fiscal year 2014 request to the Iowa School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, for allowable growth and supplemental aid for the negative special education balance for the 2013-14 school year in the amount of $3,402,370.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the district's fiscal year 2014 request to the Iowa School Budget Review Committee for allowable growth and supplemental aid for the negative special education balance for the 2013-14 school year in the amount of $3,402,370. That was the number that, Stan, that you had pointed out in your previous...
Yes, so special education, we were allowed to have a deficit there, and every UEN, I believe, that's not an exaggeration, probably almost all school districts in the state have a deficit because of the cost of running special education programming. So we were allowed to run that deficit. We are at a level where it's starting to be of concern, so we are looking at that and wanting, knowing we will probably never exist without some level of special education deficit, needing to look at how, some of that programming, but...
I have a question on that. Let's spend a past track record on like supplemental aid. Has the state granted that aid, or is this a first time occurrence, or...
You're talking about this? Special ed funding?
Yeah, for the special ed funding, that is, so that is granted through the School Budget Review Committee on a yearly basis, and that has happened.
It's like...
Yes, it, special education is never been...
Easy to be granted that, so to speak.
Absolutely. I've not ever been in a school district where that didn't occur.
Is this just an annual total for one year?
Yes.
Correct. Any other questions?
This doesn't include the Keystone payment, or...
Well, Keystone are flow-through dollars, and so technically, I don't believe they come through the special education budget, but the total budget that you saw previously did include flow-through dollars that went to Keystone.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number five to Conlon Construction on the Hempstead High School renovation project in the increased amount of $41,809.84.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number five to Conlon Construction on the Hempstead High School renovation project in the increased amount of $41,809.84. Mr. Burkhardt?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to start off by reminding you that change order one, two, and three were credits. We achieved credits of $547,900 at the start of the project, knowing that the day was going to come when we have some unforeseen conditions and need the money back. If you approve the $41,000 in front of you tonight, it'll still leave a balance of $506,000 credit on the project. We would also like to point out, we're about 16 months into the project. We have about 14 to 16 months to go, depending on what winter does to us. And I'd also like to point out that 60% of that $40,000 is in poor soil conditions and a gas line relocation. You know, going forward in the second half of this game, I'm cautiously optimistic as we go into the second half, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. There's a lot of small expenses on there, and I'd be happy to answer them rather than go through the entire list of questions I can answer.
No, because you're really almost out of the ground now. Pretty much everything else is above that. It's usually where a lot of your unforeseen...
That's right. We're, again, cautiously optimistic. Charlie, myself, and the team keep a real close eye on the budget.
The bottom line is, things are on time and to date under budget.
Exactly. We had a rough winter last year, as you know, and I think Charlie would back me up on this. We were probably three to four weeks behind, but I think that's turned around now, and if we can get a warm winter behind us, we'll be real happy come spring.
Charlie will work on that. He's got that on his to-do list.
We'd all appreciate that.
We need a motion for a warm winter. No, we don't. We've already got a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the average temperature this winter is 48 degrees Fahrenheit.
Second.
Okay, I'll remove that, I'll repeal that motion. I move that the Board of Education approve change order number nine to Ports and Construction Incorporated on the Kennedy Edition remodel project in the increased amount of $9,431.59.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number nine, the Ports and Construction, Inc., on the Kennedy Edition remodel project in the increased amount of $9,431.59.
Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions there in the change order, but I'd like to point out, this project will start closing out in November and December, and from my numbers before I came over, we're going to close out about a little over $100,000 under budget.
More good news. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
The next is the first of four final acceptances. We're finally getting some checkmarks on some of these big projects we've been chasing after here. I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the following public improvement contract with Ports and Construction Incorporated. Whereas on June 10th, 2013, Dubuque Community School District entered into a construction contract with Ports and Construction Incorporated of Dubuque, Iowa contractor for the construction of certain public improvements generally described as a Washington middle school multipurpose room addition project. And whereas on September 10th, 2012, Dubuque Community School District entered into a contract with Straka Johnson Architects PC Architect for architectural engineering design services associated with the above project. And whereas on September 25th, 2014, Architect filed a certificate with Dubuque Community School District certifying that the contractor had substantially completed the construction of said public improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract and plans and specifications. Whereas the architect has now submitted subsequent report, change order, bonds and pay application to Dubuque Community School District recommending that the project be accepted by the district as finally complete. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, section one, that said reports and documents of the architect are hereby approved and adopted. Section two, that said public improvement is hereby approved and accepted as having been fully completed in accordance with said plans, specifications, and form of contract. Section three, that the total contract cost of the improvement yet payable under said contract, Ports and Construction Incorporated, is hereby determined to be $5,549.90. Section four, that $5,549.90 of the total contract cost yet paid should be retained for a period of 30 days following this board's action to finally accept this public improvement project pursuant to the requirements of Iowa Code 573.14. If at the end of the 30-day period, claims are on file as provided, the Dubuque Community School District shall continue to retain from the unpaid funds a sum equal to double the total amount of all claims on file. The remaining balance of the unpaid fund, or if no claims are in file, the entire unpaid fund should be released and paid to the contractor in accordance with Iowa law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Ports and Construction for Washington Middle School multipurpose room addition as read. Any discussion?
I would just like to add that in May of 2014, the adjusted budget for that project was $1,480,000, so the project's going to be about $85,000 under budget, plus it's going to leave a positive balance of $58,000 in soft cost fund.
Again, good news. Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number two to Geisler Brothers Company on the senior library roof and insulation replacement and HVAC upgrade project in the increased amount of $37,995.10.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number two to Geisler Brothers Company on the senior library roof and insulation replacement and HVAC upgrade project in the increased amount $37,995.10.
And that was all associated with masonry restoration, the parapet walls, which we discussed and showed photos in facilities, and we had a $75,000 contingency. So if you approve this, we'll end up with a $37,000 positive balance on that project also.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the board president and secretary to sign the property damage release for the Washington Roof Replacement Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the board president and secretary to sign the property damage release for the Washington Roof Replacement Project.
And I would just add, this release has been reviewed by Doug Henry and Terry Friedman. The $14,877 covers all expenses incurred by the district on the 9th of June 29th, associated with that roof project and the water in the upper floor. All our expenses over time, IT, everything's covered at that amount.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Geisler Brothers. Whereas on March 10th, 2014, Dubuque Community School District entered into a construction contract with Geisler Brothers of Dubuque, Iowa contractor for the construction of certain public improvements generally described as a Washington middle school roof replacement project. And whereas on October 14th, 2013, Dubuque Community School District entered into a contract with IIW PC Architect for architectural engineering design services associated with the above project. And whereas on September 29th, 2014, Architect filed a certificate with Dubuque Community School District certifying that the contractor had substantially completed the construction of said public improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract and plans and specifications. Whereas the architect has now submitted subsequent report, change order, bonds and pay application to Dubuque Community School District recommending that the project be accepted by the district as finally complete. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, section one, that said reports and documents of the architect are hereby approved and adopted. Section two, that said public improvement is hereby approved and accepted as having been fully completed in accordance with said plans, specifications, and form of contract. Section three, that the total contract cost of the improvement yet payable under said contract with Geisler Brothers is hereby determined to be $8,723.40. Section four, that $8,723.40 of the total contract cost yet paid should be retained for a period of 30 days following this board's action to finally accept this public improvement project pursuant to the requirements of Iowa Code 573.14. If at the end of the 30-day period, claims are on file as provided, the Dubuque Community School District shall continue to retain from the unpaid funds a sum equal to double the total amount of all claims on file. The remaining balance of the unpaid fund, or if no claims are in file, the entire unpaid fund should be released and paid to the contractor in accordance with Iowa law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final costs for the public improvement contract with Geisler Brothers for the Washington Middle School Replacement Project... Geisler Brothers for the Washington Middle School replacement project as read.
And this project had one change order for $29,000, and that was also parapet wall improvements. We had a $24,000 contingency. So I think in my first time in four years, I've got to tell you, this project closed $5,400 over budget. But remember, this is one of our many summer projects, so we make it up with the other credits that I've been explaining tonight. So overall, we're still balancing out.
I think you're still in the credit balance.
Bill and Charlie and Derek do a great job keeping their eye on every expense. And if it had to be over budget, I'm confident that it had to be over budget because there's a long-term gain there.
It's a repair for decades.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Clower Development Corporation doing business as Clower Construction Company on the central kitchen loading dock project in the decreased amount of $1,500.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Clower Development Corporation, DBA Clower Construction Company, on the central kitchen loading dock project in the decreased amount of $1,500.
And that is because we deferred the epoxy floor installation to next spring to allow the concrete to dry down to proper moisture.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Tricon General Construction. Whereas, on May 12, 2014, Dubuque Community School District entered into a construction contract with Tricon General Construction of Dubuque, Iowa contractor for the construction of certain public improvements generally described as the elementary school computer lab project. And whereas, on December 9, 2013, Dubuque Community School District entered into a contract with Straka Johnson Architects PC Architect for architectural engineering design services associated with the above project. And whereas, on September 26, 2014, Architect filed a certificate with Dubuque Community School District certifying that the contractor had substantially completed the construction of said public improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract and plans and specifications. Whereas, the architect has now submitted subsequent report, change order, bonds, and pay application to Dubuque Community School District recommending that this project be accepted by the district as finally complete. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, section one, that said reports and documents of the architect are hereby approved and adopted. Section two, that said public improvement is hereby approved and accepted as having been fully completed in accordance with said plans, specifications, and form of contract. Section three, that the total contract cost of the improvement yet payable under said contract with Tricon General Construction is hereby determined to be $7,494.07. Section four, that $7,494.07 of the total contract cost yet paid should be retained for a period of 30 days following this board's action to finally accept this public improvement project pursuant to the requirements of Iowa Code 573.14. If at the end of the 30-day period, claims are on file as provided, the Dubuque Community School District shall continue to retain from the unpaid funds a sum equal to double the total amount of all claims on file. The remaining balance of the unpaid fund, or if no claims are in file, the entire unpaid fund, shall be released and paid to the contractor in accordance with Iowa law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Tricon General Construction for the elementary school computer lab project as read. Any discussion?
I just wanted to remind you, the budget on that project was $200,000 to $250,000. Again, closed under budget and was a real success.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number one to ByState Masonry Incorporated on the senior stone repointing project in the decreased amount of $13,995.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to ByState Masonry, Inc., on the senior stone reporting project in the decreased amount of $13,995 even.
There's your $5,000.
Thank you. I knew it was coming back.
This was simply unused allowances. Allowances we had there for concrete injection repair, steel reinforcement repairs, and it wasn't used. So we're back in the black.
Outstanding.
And I think there's some relevance here, that there is genuine, genuinely, an effort to keep costs down. I mean, you know, the old adage is, when it's tax money, it's nobody's money. I don't, you know, I think we do a solid job of spending the money as if it were our own money. And you can't spend the same dollar twice. And so it's, you know, money that we spend on one project can't go to another building. So it's great that we're, that we do take it seriously. Not that other groups don't, but we, I think we take it a little extra seriously.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Clower Construction Company, whereas on June 9, 2014, Dubuque Community School District entered into a construction contract with Clower Construction Company of Dubuque, Iowa contractor for the construction of certain public improvements generally described as the Jefferson Corridor Locker Replacement Project. And whereas, on February 10, 2014, Dubuque Community School District entered into a contract with Anderson Design and Consulting Incorporated, Architect, for architectural engineering design services associated with the above project. And whereas, on September 25, 2014, Architect filed a certificate with Dubuque Community School District certifying that the contractor had substantially completed the construction of said public improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract and plans and specifications. Whereas, the architect has now submitted subsequent report, change order, bonds, and pay application to Dubuque Community School District recommending that the project be accepted by the district as finally complete. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, section one, that said reports and documents of the architect are hereby approved and adopted. Section two, that said public improvement is hereby approved and accepted as having been fully completed in accordance with said plans, specifications, and form of contract. Section three, that the total contract cost of the improvement yet payable under said contract, the Clower Construction Company, is hereby determined to be $6,804.72. Section four, that $6,804.72 of the total contract cost yet paid should be retained for a period of 30 days following this board's actions to finally accept this public improvement project pursuant to the requirements of Iowa Code 573.14. If at the end of the 30-day period, claims are on file as provided by the Dubuque Community School District, shall continue to retain from the unpaid funds a sum equal to double the total amount of all claims on file. The remaining balance of the unpaid fund, or if no claims are in file, the entire unpaid fund, shall be released and paid to the contractor in accordance with Iowa law.
You need oxygen?
Okay. Teri, you're taking over one meeting, do you think?
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Clower Construction Company on the Jefferson Corridor Locker Replacement Project as read.
And I'd like to add that this project's going to close $845 under budget. Just squeaked her through.
I happened to go up to Jefferson one day for a football game, and I saw the lockers there. They're a well-needed enhancement for the school. They look great.
It's a game changer up there.
Yeah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill.
Do we want to go forward with the quarterly budget?
I think we were just going to ask Joni if we...
Is there a policy requirement for us to do that, or can we push that back?
Can we?
Kevin just sent me a message. He apologized. Is it really, you had an emergency to take care of? So we push that back to either the meeting in two weeks or into the meeting in November.
Okay. Do we need a, we don't need a table or anything, do we, on this, Joni?
Need a motion.
You just simply don't make the motion.
Okay.
Okay. So we are striking item zero to approve the quarterly budget report.
All right. That brings us to educational programs, policy strategy committee report was Ryan.
Nothing other than what was in the consent agenda. We went over, we talked over the grading for performance behavior, and talked about tweaks that need to be done with that and how it needs to be looked at before it goes any further. And just kind of briefed on, you know, dress code. Just throwing out, you know, discussion of what needs to be done or looked at as far as what's acceptable and not starting with, you know, faculty. Nothing, no changes, nothing was done, nothing was decided. It was just a conversation.
Shirley did present some straw poll numbers. They weren't official, but on kids in the high schools with known mental challenges and mental illness issues. And I think all of our eyes got a little big because the numbers were a lot bigger than anybody expected. So again, I applaud Stan and Shirley for bringing that to the meeting because, you know, we can't do anything about it unless we start talking about it.
Those numbers really are reflective of one of the reasons why we're making mental health one of the legislative priorities this year, because those numbers are larger, I think, than most people would suspect.
Thank you. Brings us to new business.
I move that the Board of Education approve Title I program plan as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the Title I program plan as submitted. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2014-15 Board Committee assignments as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 2014-15 Board Committee assignments as submitted. Any discussion?
Teri will be able to read all along.
Yeah, after hearing Barton read, you can see why I'm on the other committee.
I hope you listened well to what Tom read.
We'll be there for more.
Good luck, Teri. Yes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have two proclamations. If you'd let me read those, then we'll take the motions accordingly. The first deals with school bus safety week. Proclamation reads, whereas the Dubuque Community School District takes great responsibility and pride in transporting students to and from schools and related activities, and whereas our fleet of vehicles support, or transports students over 1 million miles during the school year, and whereas the dedicated bus drivers, mechanics, and attendants in the district are constantly committed to the safe travel of our students, and whereas parents, motorists, and community members can join us in supporting school bus safety by adhering to school bus-related traffic laws and school bus protocols. Now, therefore, I, Michael J. Donahue, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim October 20 through the 24, 2014, as School Bus Safety Week, signed this 13th day of October, 2014.
I move that the Board of Education approve School Bus Safety Week proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the School Bus Safety Week proclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The second proclamation deals with Principals Month, and it reads as follows, whereas principals and assistant principals in the Dubuque Community School District are vital members of the district's leadership team who hold primary responsibility for the well-being of our school communities, and whereas they are expected to play many roles in our schools, including that of educational visionary, instructional leader, community builder, facility manager, budget analyst, and assessment leader. And whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers and teacher leaders to develop and maintain high curriculum standards and set performance goals and objectives. And whereas they regularly go above and beyond to ensure that our schools provide the most positive learning environment for each and every student regardless of the barriers they face. Now, therefore, I, Michael J. Donahue, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim October 2014 as Principals Month, signed this 13th day of October, 2014.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Principals Month proclamation.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the Principals Month proclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 711980 at this time.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student 711980 at this time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Brings us to Board Member Administrative Issues. First to the board. Any?
Reminder, we're meeting October 30 at 8:00 a.m. Is that correct?
You stole his thunder. He's going to do a preview of the upcoming board meetings. But you're absolutely right. That is the time.
Mr. President, just a minor acknowledgement, we had a shift in our leadership for the various committees. I want to thank Mr. Barton for his chairmanship of the Support Services Committee and Mr. Strelo for his stewardship. Was it him?
Mr. Ryan.
Oh, well, you look so much alike.
I know.
Somebody had a rope we could throw right now.
My pleasure. And all those who serve on this board who do so selflessly and a lot of commitment of time and effort. So we want to thank those people.
Thank you, Mr. Brightine. Good point. All right. Preview of upcoming board meetings.
Absolutely. October is a great month for us. We not only get to have this business meeting of the board, but we have a strategic plan update on October 27, followed by a work session on the morning of the 30th, where we'll talk about not only the strategic plan, but where next. You know, big picture items, looking down the road beyond the strategic plan, and what we ought to be setting the table for, the stage for in the future in the education of students in Dubuque. So both of those hopefully will be very enlightening and great conversations.
Absolutely. All right. With that preview, we are adjourned. Thank you.